Well, call our meeting to order. First item is invocation by Pastor Joel Burna, Bethel Baptist Church. And then I think, as my Juliana will be leading the pledge.
Our heavenly Father, how we are so grateful for your love, for each of us, your goodness and grace. We pause and join our hearts together as we ask your presence in this meeting tonight in a very special way. At each of the council members, our Father, the mayor, as all of the businesses is done regarding the town, we pray, our Father, that you would grant each one wisdom and clarity and a spirit of cooperation. And Lord, we just pray your blessing upon each of the council members and mayor and all of those who have part in the proceedings tonight. We thank you, our Father, for all that you do, for all that you are, and we acknowledge that you are the God that we need to help us to have the wisdom and the understanding we need in order to do the business that we do. We pray, our Father, that everything that is done tonight would be done in a manner that is bringing honor to you and that is pleasing in your sight, for this is our prayer, in Christ's name. And everybody said, amen.
Please lead me in the national, nope, please leave me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Juliana. Appreciate that. Okay, next item is roll call.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Nye.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Bruni.
Here.
And Mayor Scoog.
Yeah, present.
Thank you, we have.
Thank you. Okay, proclamation, Youth Arts Month. Is there someone here to receive a proclamation?
Arguing.
No arguing.
You go. No, you go.
Come on down, gang. Come on down.
It's a committee.
Hi, I'm Andy Sinclair, Vice Chair of the Art and Culture Commission. I would like to thank the Commission for its proclamation on Youth Art Month. And I would also like to invite all of the council members to attend a reception on March 1st at 5:30 up in room, third floor of the Cultural Center, Civic Center. Thank you.
June, do you have a proclamation? Read it.
Yes, Mayor, I do. Youth Arts Month, March 2017. Whereas art education contributes powerful educational benefits to all elementary and secondary students, including the following: Developing students creative problem-solving and critical thinking abilities; Teaching sensibility to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities; Giving students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs; Reinforcing and bringing to life what students learn in other subjects; And interrelating student learning in art production, art history, art criticism, and aesthetics. And whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including arts experiences in all students' education, and whereas the Prescott Valley Arts and Culture Commission supports continued arts education and public art programs, therefore be it resolved that support should be given to art teachers as they attempt to strengthen art education in their schools and committees, and therefore be it resolved that we celebrate youth art in Prescott Valley with a month-long display of art and a day-long event, Family Arts Festival. Therefore, I Harvey C. Scoog, Mayor of Prescott Valley, am pleased to hereby proclaim the month of March 2017 as Youth Arts Month.
Thank you, June. Comments, Vice Mayor?
Well, we're looking forward to the events that are coming, and we're looking forward to the new members to the Arts and Culture Commission that we'll hopefully appoint tonight. So, thank you for everything you do.
Any comments, Brian?
Sir? Commissioner, any more comments?
No. Thank you again very much for your support.
We have a special copy for you, and I noticed you have a copy already, so now you've got two of them. We sure appreciate that. You introduce yourself, I take it, so everybody knows?
Yes. Art and Culture Commissioner, Andy Sinclair.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, next item is scheduled announcements and presentations. Student of the Month, Mike.
As I always say, this is probably one of my favorite council meetings of the month, the fourth month of, or the fourth week of each month, is we recognize a student of the month, and today we're recognizing Juliana Schukert. And she is one of many students at Bradshaw Mountain High School. And the Optims Club of Yabai County, in collaboration with the town of Prescott Valley and, of course, Bradshaw Mountain High School, honor each month a student. So we only honor about ten students a year, and so this is a very special, I think, recognition for Juliana. And it's because she excels in what she does at school, but also in the community, and we appreciate the things she does at school relative to academics and her volunteer work, as well as in the community, and her leadership skills. So, of course, she's been identified through the school as being one of those people that we should recognize. We believe that Juliana exemplifies, I think, the values of optimism, as well as the town of Prescott Valley is honored to recognize youth like Juliana. And we always say that we hope, once Juliana meets her educational goals, as a professional, she'll come back to Prescott Valley, hopefully, and we'll look forward to seeing her here as she is a productive member of the community, hopefully, and not, I guess, torn away to another community like Hawaii or something. I've heard about Hawaii, but we'll think only good things. The honor is being presented, as I mentioned, because people like the principal, court minor, as well as faculty and staff have recognized her instructors, as well, her accomplishments, and so that's why she's here this evening. I do have a few things that I want to say, or have a little information in terms of background, but this is Juliana, of course. And we do have the athletic director, assistant principal, Mark Ernstur, here to fill in for the principal tonight. So, we appreciate, both of them are here, and I think they're both a little nervous, I can tell, but that's okay. Mark's not nervous, okay. He, I think he looks good on the outside, but I'm sure he's shaking on the inside. But he is the athletic director at Bradshaw Mountain, so he is very strong, I'm sure. So, you know, I remarked when I got the background from Juliana today and from Mark, that a lot of times we'll see information similar to a resume. So I think Juliana, I think, is very organized. She doesn't, you know, fluff things up, she's just pretty straightforward. So, some of the things she's been involved with relative to her education at Bradshaw Mountain is that she's a dual enrollment student at Yabai College, as well as going to school at Bradshaw Mountain. And we see that a lot, I think, in terms of some of the students we recognize here every month, and so they have a head start on their college efforts. She is involved also with JTED, that's another educational institution in sports medicine, so she apparently likes sports medicine and is involved with sports as well. She is a four-year varsity track and field student. She's a 2015 state champion runner, so, you know, I think that's something that I tried to accomplish when I was in high school and didn't do very well, but obviously at Bradshaw Mountain High School, they had a lot of incentive, and I think Juliana is one of those students that gets involved. She's a lifeguard for the town of Prescott Valley, so we appreciate that. And she is a swim lessons instructor and ice skating guard, and I think those are all probably are accomplished around this facility or the one nearest down the street. And she does volunteer with the Yarnell Christmas Angels Program. So I'm gonna let Mark now kind of introduce you to Juliana in terms of academics and other things that might be important, and then we'll get to the presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Like Mr. Whiting said, my name is Mark Ernstur. I'm an assistant principal in charge of athletics operations and facilities on campus. I'm very proud and honored to be here tonight, representing Mr. Minor, to honor Juliana. Not only is she one of my student athletes on campus that represent our program, but what we're more proud of is the academic achievements that she's done on our campus. Very quietly, she goes about her business, she gets straight A's, she currently maintains a 4.42 GPA, where she's in our AP Academy, is an honors student, and every day you can count on her taking care of business, being a leader in class, finishing her assignments, and being that academic student that every assistant principal principal dreams of, that represents your campus with the utmost class, respect, and integrity. She has been one of our athletes the last four years. She did participate in the 2015 state championships. She supports our swim team as a lifeguard every day at practice at the Mountain Valley Pool. And I'm proud to say that she's gonna be leaving here, but hopefully coming back one day. She's gonna be heading to the University of Hawaii with her family, where she plans on studying pre-medicine with the hopes of becoming a doctor, a naturopastic physician, where she will come back, hopefully, and have many clients from Bradshaw Mountain High School. So, we are very proud of her. I'm very honored to be here tonight in front of her family to say congratulations, and we couldn't be more proud of what she's done, and will continue to do, representing our campus.
So before we do anything else, we'd like you to say a few words and then introduce your family, if you could, and then we'll do some presentation.
I'd like to thank you guys for welcoming me today. It's pretty cool to be here, just in general. I only have three months left at Bradshaw, and I've been here all four years, so this is a pretty cool thing as well. So, I mean, high school can get pretty hard, and my mom has always told me, fake it until you make it. And I've probably done a pretty good job at faking it then, 'cause I'm almost made it. So, it's a pretty good thing to be here, and I love seeing my picture up in the office along with all the other students I'm in class with. It's pretty sweet. I'd like to thank my dad, John, my mom, Honey, and my sister, Jessica, for being here today. And as we say on the island, mahalo.
I see you're taking quite a shine to Hawaii already. You know, I always mention I graduated from the U of A a couple of times, and they do have med school there, you know. But I know they have a naturopathic university in Phoenix as well, so at least, I'm thinking, you may be close to home. So what we'd like to do is give you a little memento of today's honor, and that is, we have a certificate for you, and it indicates Optims Club of Yabai County, in collaboration with the town of Prescott Valley and Bradshaw Mountain High School. You have been named a February Student of the Month, so congratulations. So hopefully you'll be proud of that. And we do have also a paperweight, and this is, you know, keep your, all the paperwork you have together while it reminds you you were honored as student of the month. And again, we hope to see you back here as a doctor in our fine community. We had a article in a newspaper today about the fact that we don't have a lot of the, I guess, primary care doctors, so, you know, you'd be more than welcome to come back and start your practice here in Prescott Valley. Wanted to ask if the parents had anything they wanted to say, or...
You'll have to use the microphone.
See, could get away.
I think for my husband and I both, we just, we are so incredibly proud, have been three times blessed, all three of my girls, Bradshaw Mountain High School, and we're so excited to see what's next. Thank you so much.
Well, again, it's an honor for us to recognize you tonight, Juliana. Congratulations, and we appreciate Mark for being here, he did a great job as well, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Juliana, congratulations. Good job. Keep up the good work, and we wish you the best. Okay, we move on into a water utility update. Neil, you're up.
Tonight I have with me Chris Maines, the project manager with CH2M, who is our water and wastewater operations contractor. And tonight, we're gonna talk to you about arsenic. And unfortunately, we've had a little bit of an incident, and we're going to be issuing a press release. We're providing that to you right now, and I wanted to kind of go through what this is related to and what's being done. So normally about every three years, we sample for arsenic at all our various wells throughout the town. Like I say, that's on a three-year cycle. And in February of last year, we sampled all of our wells, and the Manly Well actually had an exceedance of arsenic, and it came in at 16 parts per billion. The federal standard is 10 parts per billion, so we were above it. We did a follow-up sample, which came back at six parts per billion, okay? So, we averaged those two, and we're at 11 parts per billion, which is still above the standard. So in essence, we were in violation for the period from February of last year until now. So, as CH2M Hill was preparing our annual consumer confidence report that's about to go out, they discovered that when the arsenic exceedance occurred, a couple of things did not happen. We did not do quarterly sampling, starting after that exceedance happened last year. We were supposed to do quarterly sampling in 2016, once we exceeded the federal limit. We did not do that. In addition, we were supposed to do a 30-day public notice, and that also did not happen. And so now those things are being done at this point in time to let our citizens know. And so what you have in front of you is a copy of the press release that will go out. We are also going to be publishing a public, a legal notice in the newspaper, and putting the same information in the annual consumer confidence report, which will go out in a couple of weeks. In addition to that, we're going to now be doing our quarterly sampling this year to follow up on what the arsenic levels in that one particular well are. Couple things to keep in mind, we have about 20 wells in the system, so this was at one location. However, because that was the highest arsenic limit of any well, that's what we have to report to our citizens, that our water was. Even if it was in a localized area or didn't occur for a long period of time, it doesn't matter, that's what the worst-case scenario for our water system is, that's what we have So, we're required to let our customers know what's going on, and the, there is some required language that we have to provide to them, and within that language, we have to tell them that, first of all, this is not an immediate risk. What that means is arsenic, like some of the other compounds that we measure, have federal standards, but those standards are based on long-term exposure. It's not an acute, immediate risk, it's based on looking at a lifetime of consumption of the water and a, an increase in cancer risk based on a lifetime of exposure. So, even if we do have an exceedance, like we did, we don't have to tell people, don't drink the water. We don't, we have a 30-day period of time to tell them that, hey, we had this issue, we're working on it, we're gonna continue measuring it and see if the numbers come down, okay? And we specifically tell them, they do not have to use a different source of water, like they don't have to use bottled water, they can continue to use the water they're using, but if they have a concern or potential health risk, they should consult their doctor, okay? So, that's what we are required to tell them. One other thing of note is that prior to 2006, the arsenic limit was actually 50 parts per billion, it's now 10. So for the past 10 years or so, we've been meeting the lower limit, and like I say, we did have an issue on this well for that one sample. This is a photograph of a well being flushed, and I'm just showing that to you right now because I'm about to talk about flushing of wells, and this is just so you'll see. At all of our well sites, we have a pipe that looks like the one in the picture above, and before the wells are actually allowed to put the water into the distribution system, we actually, once, when we first start them up, we actually flush them out for a period of time to basically get any stagnant water out of there, to get any unusual contaminants or sediment out of there, to get it more uniform to what the well is actually supposed to be producing, and then we will put it into the distribution system. All right, so, there are some reasons that what happened, happened. I'm not gonna try and make it sound like these are excuses, I'm, they're the reasons. They shouldn't have happened, but they did. So, at the time, the Manly Well, when we took the sample, the well was not in operation. And in fact, ADQ, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, has a contractor that comes up and collects all these samples on the day that they're scheduled to do it. We go out with them, we flush the wells, we let them take the samples. Because they were trying to get all these wells done in a, in one day or one or two days, there's a lot of them, we have 20 wells and all these sites they go to, they flushed the well for about 15 minutes before they took the sample. As I said, it's not online at the time, it was not providing water to our citizens. But the one-hour flushing time, or the 15-minute flushing time was probably not enough to get that down to where the normal levels of arsenic that we do see in our wells was obtained, so it was still at an elevated number. So, once we discovered that, a couple weeks later, after we got the results back, we went out and sampled that well again. Still, the well was not in operation, okay? And the second sample was a six, so that's lower than the 10, but as I mentioned earlier, the six averaged with the 16 gave us an 11, okay? Well, was still not being used, but we did flush it better that time, and you can see we got a lower result. But the well was put into operation in April, okay? And it was run from April through October. This kind of helps get everything in perspective as far as when things happened and what was going on. So the big red line across there at 10 parts per billion, that's concentration of arsenic, that is the federal limit. So, the scale on the left, on the left-hand side shows you the level of arsenic in our water, the federal limit is 10. The first sample you see that's listed up above there, it's sort of above January, but it's listed as 16 way up at the top on the left-hand side. That was the first sample. The second sample, a little over there, just right in March, says six, okay? So we took that sample, and then the well was put into operation. That's the big block in the middle that shows, starting in April and going through October, we were operating that well. And because of the average of those two samples that we took, we have to assume that we were at 11 parts per billion for that duration. In October, we took the well back out of service. We only use this well during the summer or the high-usage months, so we took it back out of operation in October, and it, what hasn't been used since and has not been put back online again this year, which will happen in another month or so. So, as CH2M was preparing our consumer confidence report, several... So as CH2M was preparing our consumer confidence report several weeks ago, they discovered that these things were missed. So immediately, we went out, flushed the well again, and took another sample, which will be the start of our quarterly sampling for 2017. It came in at a 4.7. You can see, the two samples that straddle the operation of the well were actually 6 and 4.7. And because we were running the well continuously, it should have had a number closer to that, but we can't say that. All we can say is, based on federal regulations, it was 11 parts per billion. So what are we doing now? Well, as I mentioned, we have already taken a sample in February of this year. It was at 4.7. We will continue to sample quarterly this year. We are going to conduct a flushing analysis on that particular well, which means we're going to start the well up, and we're going to take an arsenic sample immediately. We're going to let it run for five minutes, we're going to take another sample. We're going to let it run for 10 or 15 minutes, take another sample. And we're going to take samples through a period of time that may last four hours, six hours, whatever. And we're going to look at what the concentration of arsenic is versus the amount of flushing time, and see at what point is really the amount of time that we need to flush that well. Like I say, typically, we flush it for longer than the 15 minutes that was done on that one particular day. But this will give us a better feel for knowing that that particular, a certain amount of time of flushing is what's required. Before we do put this well into operation this fiscal year, we will start it up, we will flush it for whatever amount of time we believe is needed, based on the flushing analysis that we're going to do. We will take an arsenic sample, and then we will put it into, start distributing that water into the system. We will have that result expedited, so within two days, we will know what that arsenic number came at. And if it was higher than 10, we'll immediately shut the well off. If it was lower than 10, we will continue to let it run and take the quarterly samplings as we're required to do. Once we have shown compliance with four quarters of the sampling, we can then return the well back to a three-year sampling cycle. I think I've explained everything as well as I can, so at this point in time, I turn it over to questions. Any questions you may have?
Questions, anyone? Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I just had a question. On the quarterly sampling, was that required as a part of this recognition that we had an arsenic level above the state requirements?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, we should have done quarterly sampling. When we, when we took the follow-up sample that came in at a 6, and the average of the two was still above the 10, it was 11, we should have immediately started quarterly sampling at that point in time.
Okay.
Had that sample come back, and the average of the two was less than 10, we would not have had to do the quarterly sampling.
Okay. Yeah, I just wasn't sure about that. The other was, do we sample on any kind of a basis the other wells?
All of our wells are sampled on a three-year cycle.
Three-year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary?
Neil, where does arsenic come from? Is that something that somebody dumped into the well, or where's it come from?
Arsenic is a naturally occurring mineral in the ground, and any system that uses groundwater is going to have levels of arsenic in it. And when the federal government recognized that long-term exposure to arsenic at higher levels than 50 parts per billion, they were, you know, doing some additional medical tests and things, when they realized that that number needed to be lower, and they dropped it down to 10. Like I said, it's still based on a lifetime number, but when they did that, there were thousands of public water systems and private water systems throughout the country, and a lot specifically in the West and Southwest, that immediately had issues with arsenic. And so once those systems recognized that, if they couldn't blend their water with other sources to get the number down, or if they couldn't find another water source or treat at the wellhead, you know, they would have problems. So a lot of them put in wellhead treatment systems to get their numbers down. For us, fortunately, most of the time, our numbers are below 10 parts per billion, and typically, they run in the 4 to 8 range. We do have a couple wells that, once in a while, have a little bit higher numbers. This is one of them. We have another one that does, is doing something similar right now that we've had to shut off, that we are going to have to look at doing something different with that well. But that'll be for future discussion. So yeah, we do have arsenic. Prescott has arsenic. In fact, Prescott has an arsenic treatment facility in Chino Valley where they get their water from, because their water right out of the ground, the numbers are higher than 10. So they have to do something. We are fortunate in that we don't incur that expense.
Vice Mayor? Laura?
Thank you for mentioning about Prescott, because really, all of the water companies in our area deal with this. This unfortunately is common to the area. But here's where my question is. Citizens are going to hear the word "risk," they're going to hear the word "cancer," and we're going to have some that are going to be frightened and very upset. So how are we going to go about getting the facts out and heard? Because it's very hard when you hear on a radio broadcast, or you read in a newspaper just little bits and bites. So we've got to do a very good job of telling this whole story to our citizens, so that they don't overreact to those words, "risk" and "cancer."
Yes, ma'am. And so the press release that you have in front of you is hopefully going to address that. We spent a lot of time putting that together, and Heidi helped us with it as well. And so, I mean, we can, we're trying to explain what happened and what that means in terms of what that health risk is. But there is certain, some certain language that we actually are required to put in our notifications.
Yes.
And so, yeah, it's based on long-term exposure, and if over your lifetime, you drink water that has arsenic above the federal limit, over your lifetime, the full time, then yeah, you're going to have an increased risk of cancer. What that increased risk is, I can't tell you, but they set those standards to minimize what that risk is. So for a short period of duration, and let's say, six months is a short duration, it's really not a concern. If it was a concern, a significant concern, the federal government and ADQ would be requiring us, number one, shut the well off and don't serve that water to anybody. Number two, tell everybody immediately what has happened, and, you know, tell them what, you know, to drink bottled water. Well, we're not required. We're required to tell them that they don't have to change their water source, that this is, you know, over a short period of time, this is not that big a deal. But over the long term, it is.
Neil, wouldn't it be important to say that the well that tested at that higher-than-standard level was not functioning, was not pumping water into the system?
Right.
And once you took that well and flushed it properly, that it was well below the standards. So the assumption in that graph is completely inaccurate, that says that it was functioning at an average higher than standard, when you and I both know as operators of a system, when it's flushed, it's below standard. And so the information that Councilwoman Nye is asking for is very clear. Number one, it was not pumping into the system, and there was a high hit. When it's flushed, it's below standard.
That's correct. And as an engineer, I would say, you look at the 6, and you look at the 4.7, the two numbers on either side, and that's where I would say the level probably was. As a regulated utility, I can't say that.
But I just did.
But you just did, and I agree with you. Yes.
Let's be honest.
Neil, Neil, I don't want to make light of this. This is not my intention with what I'm going to, about to say. But we all know, I've lived a very long time. I've lived most of it where I drank water with arsenic. I've never been without arsenic in my drinking water. Now, it might explain my eccentricity. You're enjoying this too much. But I just, I can't bear the thought of citizens being frightened. I'm just overwhelmed with concern about citizens that aren't going to take the time to read something like this. And so, we have to do better than this.
Okay. Okay, so you want us to do something better than this in terms of...
I think we've got to get, let me qualify. There's nothing wrong with this, but look at it for a citizen that doesn't understand the technology involved here. We need good, concise soundbites that they can follow and clearly understand. That's what I want developed in addition to this. I'm only one, but I'm telling you, I'm representing my generation. This is too much for them. We need pertinent points in soundbites, and we need to produce it over and over.
Marty?
Yeah, just to follow up on what Laura Lee just said, the citizens will not be seeing that one slide that we saw, where the, when the sample was taken in, was it January or February? Okay, that was 16. Okay? And they didn't see the graph where, just before we put the well in operation, it was 6.7, and after operation, it was 4 points, you know? So they didn't see that graph to come to the conclusion that, yeah, although by federal law, or state law, whatever it is, we have to average it out, and it comes to 11, in actuality, the time that the pump was operating, it was well below the 10. And if they don't see that graph, and there is nothing in the explanation, because I read the whole thing, there's nothing in the explanation saying that. So again, we don't want to put the, you know, because of people that don't see this on a regular basis, and don't have you sitting in their living room to explain it to them, it needs to be clear, concise, and, you know, if you're going to give them any kind of a picture, give them the picture of that one slide with an explanation, and you could qualify it by saying, "In my opinion is this, but according to what we have to report, we have to say this."
And we can provide that graphic with the press release. And in addition, another important point to remember is that this was one well, one of the smaller wells in our system, and it was used for a six-month period of time. Compared to a lot of the other wells, which we use day in and day out, it's a small portion of our water.
But you're reading the letter of the law, which we honor and we respect.
Mary?
Well, first of all, I appreciate all the information you've given. I realize this is kind of a hard topic to deal with, in the sense of it all, but in the beginning of the conversation, I heard you say something about that the Arizona or the department came out to test the wells. And because there's a lot of wells, I kind of got a feeling you said they were in a rush. Did I understand that correctly?
That is correct, and...
So I'm wondering, had they done the flush correctly in the beginning, would we have the right numbers to start with?
That is also correct, yes. So one of the things that we will definitely be doing is, when they come out to do those samples, we will ensure that we're not just going out there at that particular time and flushing it for the first, you know, for 10 or 15 minutes while they're standing there. We will have the wells flushed, if they're inactive, we will have them flushed already, either the day before, or we will start them all up that morning, and by the time they get there to sample, they will have at least had whatever, you know, whatever the amount of time needed to achieve compliance.
And, you know, I realize there's a lot of work involved in this, but if they come out and, you know, with all due respect, do this job incorrectly, and then we get these numbers that possibly have a good chance of being incorrect, and we're all up here and we have to go through all of this, in reality, rushing is not the answer. If they need to spend the night here a few times just to get all the wells done correctly, I think in the future, that might benefit them and the rest of us.
Right. Well, ADQ's contractor, we have no control over, but we can make sure our own guys get those things flushed out to the appropriate extent prior to the sampling being done. And you're absolutely correct, that did not save us anything. It was, you know...
Yeah.
Obviously, we would rather this had not happened.
Yeah, I do appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. Neil, thank you for bringing it forward, I appreciate it. I believe that what I'm hearing is, we have some more sampling that we need to do, to be able to level everything out. With more samples, we're going to be able to see the numbers come within the standard. Does that sound correct?
Yes, and it's just this one well that we have to do that sampling at.
And so we've done one already in February this month for the Manley?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and so then, well, we have three more samplings for this year.
At least, we will do the, we will do the three other quarterly samples, but as I mentioned, we're also going to be doing some arsenic profiling based on the flushing of the system. So we're going to get a bunch of numbers, but we will have four quarterly samples as required, in addition to the ones that we're going to be taking on top of that.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, we're going to go over and above that to be able to tell the whole story in a bigger picture, in case there was a fluke here, because of the quickness with which they sampled.
Yes.
Okay, which can happen, I do understand that. One thing I appreciate, Councilmember Nye alluded to, is putting this in context with what these numbers mean in the big picture, so that there is not an overarching concern, so that people can see where we're at, especially since the numbers, it was reduced at one point from our federal standards, knowing that we've made it stricter, and we can show that. I think that'll be part of the message that we want to put out there. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I do, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Mary, I understand what you were saying about, you know, it being, maybe being rushed to happen, but I think the bigger picture here is the fact that it happened, and we didn't react to it correctly. And I think my concern is that in the future, we act correctly.
Yes, sir.
And we take, and if we've learned something from this, I'm satisfied that we'll be able to deal with it better. I'm not concerned about the quality of the well. You've explained that, you've shown us where it was probably good to begin with. I understand all those circumstances, and I think it was fine. My concern is, did we learn something academically that's going to take us through the next time something like this happens? And I think had we acted the way we were expected to act, we wouldn't be having this conversation today. And I think that's what really catches us off-guard here, is that here we are a year later, and I'm hearing it for the first time, and the people out here are hearing it for the first time. And that's what will bother more people than anything else. It really doesn't matter that I'm drinking the same water they are. You know, they aren't going to care about that. And the fact that the water isn't bad water to begin with, and that the water's been safe all along, because it has been. And we understand that, and we know you go beyond anything that you can do. So, you know, everyone does. And you've done a great job with everything that you've done. And I appreciate this presentation, because it shows the lengths that you've gone to, to take care of this problem. And I think the fact that you're ready to step up the next time you know what's coming, and be ready for it, and you've identified the issue, I think you will be ready for it. You know, and I know you understand that.
Chris, you've got any comments?
No, I, yes, thank you. I'd just like to say that, you know, we do take compliance as very seriously, and it's our utmost importance...
I'm going to attach a little closer to the microphone.
...in protecting our customers and our client. You know, in this year's CCR, we have expedited that delivery. Normally, it's out by July, near July, but we've expedited that delivery this year. We've had a full team here and our compliance group back at corporate to make sure that, you know, we get this information out to the public as soon as possible. We may be one of the first communities in the state to have it out, so, and we intend on doing this in the future, too. So this is, requires us to go back to our internal practices... So, this is, requires us to go back to our internal practices and reevaluate some of the improvements and where we need to make sure that this is notified a lot earlier, a lot sooner, so. But it is our job to make sure that we perform perfect compliance and even perfect reporting of non-compliance as soon as possible.
Mayor?
Yeah, Laura?
I just want to thank them for their integrity and the full public disclosure today. That is very meaningful to me. And Neil, this must be so hard for you.
I intend to not be back here again talking about this ever.
To me, it doesn't seem like it's that serious. The requirement used to be fifty parts per billion, and that was changed during the Clinton administration, so that, it's not been that many years where the ten parts per billion has been in effect. And I can remember Prescott, when they, when they changed it, they had all kinds of problems, because theirs were exceeding that limit, so. It's been a, it's a concern, and I think you've done a good job. Any other comments, anyone?
No.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to recommend if we could get some additional information in the future, whenever that might be, maybe a work study, just give us an idea what the status of the other wells are, what, when they've been, you know, when was the last three-year check for them? I'd just be curious to see where we're at with that as well, and then become a little more familiar with the sites again of the, where the wells are.
Okay, any other comments, anyone? Neil, I think both of you, Chris, you've done a great job, and we appreciate that. And keep up the good work. Always do a good job. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to go on to number seven, certificate of appreciation to Jody Rooney for her service in the Arts and Culture Commission. Can we meet you downstairs, down below, Jody?
Okay.
Before we get into it, you got any comments, Vice Mayor?
It just doesn't seem like that long ago you were standing up here. We were putting you on the Arts and Culture Commission, but congratulations on your new position, and I know there's a couple of people in the room tonight that are sad, but excited to see you go, so, as they replace you, so.
Jody, I hope you don't think this is relieving you of work. We're going to have plenty of other jobs for you, so you'll be, you know, we'll keep you busy.
Well, do we have any comments from the council?
No, just read it and let her blush.
Okay. So, we have a certificate of appreciation presented by the Town of Prescott Valley to Jody Rooney in appreciation for your dedicated service on the Town of Prescott Valley Arts and Culture Commission, April 2016 to January 2017.
Jody, we're going to present that to you and ask for your comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate being a public servant here at the town. I love my town. I'm looking forward to our new commissioners who are going to be coming on. This is a good time to join the commission, and I thank you for this acknowledgement.
Thank you. Jody, congratulations. Okay, we have another certificate of appreciation. Jamie Buckman, ten years of service, and I know there's a bunch of people that want to come up with you. So, let's, everybody come on up. And I think, do you have some comments, June?
I do have comments, yes.
She's got comments.
Jamie has the whole back row there. Jamie Buckman, ten-year service award. Jamie was hired with the Town of Prescott Valley just over ten years ago on January 2nd, 2007. She began her career with us as part-time administrative aide in the Management Services Department to primarily work in the mailroom. However, due to Jamie's initiative and ability to succeed, she has continually accepted and taken on new challenges every year, right from the beginning. She quickly took on additional duties in Management Services to include responsibilities in assisting the sales tax auditor, requisition processing, and working in utility billing. In January of 2009, Jamie began to also support other work areas that included the library with regular shifts on the circulation desk, and then in March of 2010, increased her work hours to provide 50% of her time to supporting Human Resources Department. And in July of 2012, Jamie was promoted to Human Resources Technician full-time, where she has served both internal and external customers 100% ever since. She has never had a single accident and remains a perfect, maintains a perfect safety record. And for the past seven years, Jamie has grown professionally in the field of Human Resources. Today, her primary responsibilities are in the area of recruitment, where she counsels managers in the hiring and onboarding of all new employees. She is cross-functional in all other HR disciplines that include performance management, training and development, compensation and benefits, and wellness and safety. She oversees personnel records, retention initiatives, and acts as our Human Resources Information Systems Database Administrator to provide all personnel payroll action items. Due to her long tenure, high quality of work, and overall depth of knowledge, Jamie trains all department staff and volunteers in delivering HR services and completing operational functions. She is an active member of our Regional Prescott Area Human Resources Association, and is currently studying with the Society of Human Resource Management to test for her national HR professional certification. Beyond Jamie's extensive skills and abilities, she is truly a delight to work with. She brings laughter and joy to our workplace on a daily basis. She is diligent in the performance of her duties and conducts herself at all times with the highest level of integrity. Jamie embodies the core values of our organization and is a respected public servant throughout our community. She is often the first person our job seekers meet and new employees get to know. They see her as the face of the Prescott Valley workforce, and she never fails to represent us well. She is a trusted friend and replying upon professional to all town employees. Collectively, we congratulate Jamie for her successful ten years and look forward to her continued career successes and bright future with the town.
Did you write that yourself, Jamie? Karen, you have any comments?
Very nice.
Karen?
Yeah.
Do you want to make comments?
I do. Yes, we have all the HR team here today, but we also have Jamie's sister, and then Carolyn, and back in the corner is Michelle, and then Lee was Jamie's original supervisor. So, I think it says a lot that both her past and current supervisors are here tonight to recognize her. She is one of the best decisions I made in the last six years to join the Human Resources team. She is the glue that holds us all together on day in, day out. We've had a little war about, I'm trying to get her to take more vacation time so that she has less vacation accrued than me, because she's just here every day, all the time, and she truly is a joy to work with. She makes us laugh every day, and not only those technical skills that we count on in all those disciplines in Human Resources, but just having that partnership with her every day is a true joy. So, thank you so much for being part of our team. We love you.
Vice Mayor, any comments?
Well, Jamie, we want to thank you for your ten years and hope to have you here for at least another ten, so. Anybody else?
Jamie, where are you? I want to make eye contact. It's been very obvious for a long time that you're very versatile, and you move from challenge to challenge to challenge, and you excel. I see a shaking head back there. Got to be Karen. And we want to thank you for taking those abilities and that versatility and that quality of handling challenges and giving the gift of view to us here in the town.
Marty?
Yeah, I'm up in the office at least a couple of times a week, sometimes more, and anytime I'm up in the civic center, one of my stops is, my last stop is always into the HR department. And whenever I go in there, there's, everybody there is always smiling, you know, and you don't see the stress on their face, because they all do their jobs so well. And I guess, you know, the person who basically commands that outside area is Jamie, and it's just a pleasure to go in there all the time. And like I said, they're always so friendly, and everything there runs so smoothly that you wouldn't know if there was a problem, just by the looks on their faces. And a lot of times, you go in an office, and you could see that something's going on in there, never. It's just always smiles and giggles, and they get the job done, and that's the important thing. So, thank you for ten years. We look forward to many more.
Thank you. Mary?
Appreciate your service, and gee, that was just so many beautiful things that was said about you and what you bring to the employment area and what you bring to the community. So, God bless you, and looking forward for another ten years. Thank you.
Mike?
Well, Jamie, congratulations. We are proud as a council, I think, to recognize you this evening, and, you know, we do this quite a bit throughout the year, and a lot of the times where we have most of, a lot of our employees anyway, through the police department, we see a lot of police officers move up through the ranks. And I've kind of realized tonight that this isn't just something that happens in the police department, it's kind of our corporate culture. And I say that because I think as you begin your position, you grow and move on to leadership areas, and, you know, I think that's something that we can thank our management and department heads for, because it does bring value to our community, and means a lot to us, I think, that you're here, and that hopefully you'll keep on going forward and providing the leadership that we count on from you. So, congratulations again, Jamie.
Jody?
Jamie, you greeted me in a very friendly manner, and I want you to know that I appreciated that. And if you greeted me that way, that means you greet other people that way, too. That's just who you are, I can tell. And what we heard today was beautiful words, and it's an indication of what you're doing now, but for the future as well, and that's a really good thing. And I bet your sister can attest to that. You probably were moving forward and doing lots of things when she was, you know, at home, and that's a really good thing. Thank you. You know, I'd love to hear from your sister. I bet she's got something to say.
Oh, you don't want to hear from me.
Twenty minutes. Anyone have any comments? Your sister want to make some comments?
I'm just very proud. That's all I can say.
That's all you can say?
That's all I can say.
You still have nineteen and a half minutes.
No, thank you.
Anyone else? Vice Mayor has a presentation to make.
We have an appreciation award from the Town of Prescott Valley presented to Jamie Buckman in appreciation for ten years of dedicated service, January 2007 through January 2017. And we have your ten-year pin.
Congratulations. And now, you've got twenty minutes.
Oh, darn, I left my speech at home. I just want to say, I work with a bunch of great people here. It feels like yesterday that I was sitting there and Lee was interviewing me. And just thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, and congratulations. Take a picture, pose with us. Come on in, so she can get a picture.
So cute.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Carolyn. Thank you all. Next, council, any comments, communications from anyone? Marty?
First off, this morning, I attended a conference. Its title is Economic and Community Benefits of Sports. It was put on by the A A E D, which is the Arizona Association for Economic Development. We had a large contingency of people from all over the state, and they all were talking about what the, what a building similar to what we have here, the Prescott Valley Event Center, has, and its effects on the community. So, we heard many different stories. But the bottom line is, this whole thing was put together by our newest, one of our newest people on board for our staff, Ben Hooper, who's our Economic Development Coordinator. The fact that Ben has only been here less than six months, and he was able to put this on, everybody was so complimentary on how well this was done, and the quality of the speakers. And one of our speakers, one of the speakers was our own town manager, Larry Tarkowski, and it was just great. So, Ben not only put Prescott Valley on the map regarding economic development, regarding a sports arena, but his, the quality of his work, and it's just starting, not only is within our own community, but is now within the entire region of Arizona. And his name is out there, and what he did, I know he's already part of a future planning event that's going to be taking place in October, and I'm sure there'll be more about that later on, but, yeah, well, yeah, Ben is here in the, in the audience. I sort of twisted his arm to come down and listen. I gave him a hint this afternoon that I was going to be saying these things, so he better watch tonight, and then he ended up showing up. So, thank you, Ben. You did a, you know, it was great to be there and to listen to everything that had to be said, but to your credit, you know, you're the one that everybody was giving credit to as to putting the whole thing together. So, thank you, and keep up the good work. Okay, that's my first one. Now, I have, anybody that knows me knows that I'm involved in several organizations, and I'm always involved in some sort of fundraiser coming up. So, I have three, I think it's three, that I want to talk about. First off, there's a murder mystery dinner that's being done as a fundraiser for the VFW in Prescott Valley. It's going to be a 1929 mafia murder mystery dinner. I'm one of the characters in the play, so I'm really excited about that. It's going to be taking place on March 25th. It's a Saturday night. Tickets are $25 for a single, $45 for a couple. Tickets are available either at the VFW or at the Prescott Valley Chamber office. Marty Uhl is directing the play for us. Yeah, okay, all right. Next one is, the Prescott Valley Police Foundation is doing a fundraiser, first time. They're doing a golf tournament. That's going to be taking place on April 23rd. There's going to be a ball drop, there are all kinds of prizes available. It's on the Prescott Valley Police Foundation website and their Facebook page. And I just want to let you know, to hold the date, August 19th, we're doing Hope Still Floats again. It's a charity for the Yavapai Family Advocacy Center, which takes care of sexual abuse and rape victims within the county. So, if anybody has any questions or wants more information, please contact me. It's mgrossman@pvaz.net, or you just call the office and Lee will put you through to me. Thank you.
Any other comments, communications? If not, then we'll move on to all the matters under consent agenda. These are to be considered separately by the town. These are to be considered separately by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. Unless discussion is desired, then that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. For discussion and action, approving out of February 9th, 2017 council meetings, approving the Chamber of Commerce Special Event Liquor License, approving a budget transfer for a contingency fund in the amount of $12,880 to the Public Works Engineering Services, line item and an amendment to the Town Engineer Agreement with Devon Associates for Long Look Drive Sidewalks, Street Improvements, CIPS 401, department reports, accounts payables, monthly financial report, council investment report, approving quarterly sales tax, approving the January 25th, 2017 Board Selection Committee Meetings, Minutes, approving the reappointment of David Kibbers pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute 38-847A1 to fill his citizen of the town position on the local board for the four-year term beginning January 1st, 2017, or December 31st, 20, I'm sorry, and ending December 31st, 2020, and awarding to Rico the operating lease of one Rico PRO 8200 S copier per Rico U.S. Community Equipment Sale and Maintenance Agreement, and attempting, or accepting the gift deed for property needed for the expansion of the Glassford Hill Road Long Look Intercession. We've studied a lot of these items, so council want to pull anything, or do you want to approve it as a whole?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole.
Second, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have them. Any other comments? If not, June, we're going to set the vote.
I'll approve that.
It passes? For some reason, we're not hearing you, June.
Yeah, we were just checking a couple of votes here. Councilmember Nye, did you vote? It didn't come up.
It didn't come up, but yes.
Now it is.
Okay, all right. Got everybody. Okay.
That passes unanimously. Thank you, June. Okay, now we'll move on to number 10, Old Business for Action. Second reading of ordinance number 823, approving amendments to section 2-01-080 of the Town Code, finance disclosure statement that pertains to, to the report that the council, any elected official has to make. Any comments? No, Larry, anybody? Questions, comments, anyone? If not, I would instruct town clerk to read ordinance number 823 by title only for a second reading. June?
Okay. Ordinance number 823, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending section 201-080 financial disclosure statement in article, in article 201, council, in chapter 2, mayor and council of the Town Code, to conform with recent Arizona statutory revisions, providing that all other articles, sections, and subsections of the Town Code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any jurisdiction of this ordinance is held invalid by, by the court of, court of a competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, in providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, June. With that, I would say, shall the ordinance pass? You want to set the vote, June?
Yes.
And that passes. Thank you. Okay, now we go on to number 10B. Again, second reading of ordinance number 824, approving amendments to chapter 6, animals and chapter 10, offenses of the Town Code. Are there any questions, or shall we ask her to do it? If there's no questions or comments, I would instruct June to read the ordinance number 824 by title only for the second reading. June?
Ordinance number 824, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled Amendments to Chapter 6, Animals and Chapter 10, Offenses, declared by Resolution Number 1985 to be a public record, which amends chapter 6, Animals of the Town Code to, among other things, remove provisions no longer applicable to current enforcement practices, and amends chapter 10, offenses, to clarify that service animals are exempt from certain regulations prohibiting animals in park, public parks, directly adopting penalty provisions, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code not herein repealed, reenacted, or amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, in providing that the ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, June. Okay, the next question is, shall the ordinance pass? Would you set the vote, June? And that passes.
And that passes.
Thank you, June. Okay, now we go into number 11, New Business, considering the appointment, consideration of appointing Linda Cartwright to the Arts and Culture Commission with a term, to a term with renewal date of June 30th, 2018. Vice Mayor, you have any comments?
I do. Would you care to come up, Linda, please? One position on the Arts and Culture Commission became open when Jody Rooney resigned, effective January 2017, when she was appointed to the town council. Ms. Rooney was appointed to the Arts and Culture Commission on April 14th, 2016, to fill an existing term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2018. The vacancy was advertised and three applications were received. Myself, councilmembers Laura Lee Nye and Mary Mallory conducted the interviews and are recommending the appointment of Linda Cartwright to fill the vacancy made by Jody Rooney's departure with a term renewal date of June 30th, 2018. And welcome tonight.
Laura?
I do. I'm probably going to get in trouble for this, but sometimes I feel like Arts and Culture Commission is our stepchild. Yeah, see, Brian's eyebrows went right up into his hairline. But, having said that, I am so excited about the two people we're putting in place tonight. I don't think I'm going to feel like it's a stepchild anymore. And Linda, your, your energy, your enthusiasm, I'm just going to stop there because I could do a long list of qualities that I'm aware that you're bringing to the commission, and I, just the humblest of thank you for being willing to serve in this capacity.
Mary, any comments?
Oh, I just appreciate you joining us, and I know that you have a strong desire to serve in the community, and you are definitely an asset to our town. And I look forward to many other things in the future that you will bring as we move forward. So, thank you so much, Linda.
And Linda, anything to say in your defense?
Temporary insanity.
You want to pull the micro, mic up a little closer?
I just said temporary insanity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to serving.
Now we have to see if we can get a motion. If that fails, we'll, I don't know what.
Mayor, I would be very pleased to make a motion to appoint Linda Cartwright to the Arts and Culture Commission to a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2018.
And I'd like to second that.
Second, anyone? June, would you set the vote? This will be the big test, Linda.
Waiting for the confetti to fall.
Start voting.
And Mayor, that passes.
It's unanimous. Linda, anything else you want to add?
No, I'm just very excited, and as Laura Lee mentioned, I'm just, I bring a lot of excitement and a lot of energy, and I have some big shoes to fill with Jody stepping down, and it's very nice of her to do that. Thank you so much. And I'm just looking forward to doing the best I can and helping to bring arts and culture into the world.
I think you better pull the mic up a little bit.
Sorry. Thank you.
We sure appreciate that. Thank you so much, Linda. Okay, we move on then to number B, consideration of appointing Gary Clemmons to the Arts and Culture Commission with a term, to a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2017. Vice Mayor, you have any comments?
I certainly do. Come on down, Gary. One position on the Arts and Culture Commission became open when Helen Dickerson resigned, effective October 31st, 2016. Ms. Dickerson was appointed to the Arts and Culture Commission on October 23rd, 2014, to fill an existing term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2017. The vacancy was advertised and three applications were received. Myself, councilmembers Laura Lee Nye and Mary Mallory conducted the interview and are recommending appointment of Gary Clemmons to fill the vacancy made by Helen Dickerson's departure with a term renewal date of June 30th, 2017. Welcome.
Laura, any comments?
Of course. Gary and I go back a ways. Gary provided something for me as chair of the state centennial gala that we had here. He served on that committee, and I was struggling. I knew what I wanted, but I wasn't really accomplishing the context. And Gary said, I can do that for you. And he stepped to the plate, and he took, took all of that upon himself and put the entertainment together for that gala. And by the way, there were 650 people sitting there that night on the floor, and there was about 170 people sitting up on the sidelines. And Gary, every one of them enjoyed what you brought to this event. So, here's my public chance to say thank you and give all the rest of you an idea of the qualities of Gary. Not only is he a musician, he's a giver, and he's a servant, and we're just so fortunate, Gary. Thank you so much.
Gary, any comments?
Gary, I am just, I'm really honored to have met you personally a few weeks ago. And that event, and Laura Lee, you did a fabulous job at that event, by the way. But Gary, it was just a wonderful evening, and I look forward to all the wonderful musical events that we have coming forward. I just am so excited that, thank you so much for joining.
Gary, anything to say in your defense?
First of all, I would like to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to serve again for this beautiful city, to advise and maybe research and consult with the committee on some upcoming things that I think, we think may enhance the quality of life in this beautiful town that I've grown so accustomed to and love dearly. I rented my first apartment in a duplex on Yavapai in 1976, on Yavapai Road. I fell in love with this area, and even though I've had to leave and make money other ways, I've always come back. And I'm socked into this community, and I love it, and I'm proud to serve.
We sure appreciate that. We appreciate the quality of candidates we're getting for these positions. We really are very fortunate. So, is any, anyone care to make a motion, or demotion, or commotion, or promotion, emotion? Who's doing it?
I'd like to make a motion for Gary Clemmons to be appointed to the Arts and Culture.
Second?
Mayor, I'd like to second that.
A motion is made and seconded. You want to set the vote for us? Now, this is the big test, Gary.
Who's the second? Oh, Jody, okay. Now we can do it.
And that's your decision. We got two super people. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, now we will move on to number C, consideration of approving the professional services agreement with Stroh Architecture Incorporated in the amount of $50,000 for architectural design of the Boys and Girls Club Expansion Project. Ryan, you got any comments?
Yes, Mayor, council. For about the past seven weeks, we've been going through a process to bring an architect on board to design the expansion of the Boys and Girls Club. We received five proposals. Those were ranked, and we interviewed the top three of those firms. The top-ranked firm was a firm out of the Phoenix area called Boarc. We negotiated with them, but unfortunately, we're not able to come to terms with them because they required us to hire our own geo-technical firm, or in the alternative to sign a limited liability waiver, something we were not willing to do, considering our soils in this area, how infamous they are for expanding and contracting. So, we went on to the next most qualified firm per Arizona Revised Statutes, which was Stroh Architecture, and I'm pleased to present them as the future architect if you so vote to design this expansion. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, anyone?
You ready for a motion?
I think we're ready, yes. If there's no questions, we are. Thank you, Ryan.
Motion to approve professional service agreement with Stroh Architecture, Inc. in the amount of $50,000 for architectural design of the Boys and Girls Club Expansion Project by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, June?
Was that councilmember Grossman that seconded?
Yes.
Okay, it didn't come up.
Push the button.
Okay.
Nothing's happening, June. I don't know what.
Okay, it is now.
Oh, there it comes, okay.
Okay.
And that passes, Mayor.
It passes. Thank you. Okay, now the next one, D, is consideration of adopting a development agreement with Ridge Christian Fellowship for the, and yeah, and that one we'll pull. That one, that's by request of, I don't know if it was staff or who, but that's going to be a part of our next meeting. Okay, with that, we go on to comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not to ask permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Anyone have any public comments? Kirk, none? If there's no comments, we'll move on to number 12, which I know everyone hates. Adjournment?
Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to die for lack of a second. Oh, we got a second, okay. Would you set the vote, June?
Got a second?
Yes. Laura Lee.
Okay. They're, for some reason, they're not popping up. Just one second.
Passes. No abstains either. Thank you, June. Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned, but we're going to call another one to order here as soon as June gets ready for us. And let's take care of that. I'm sorry.
I thought it was canceled.
That's canceled, too. Okay. Meeting is adjourned. I guess that was canceled, too. I didn't know that.